My city and as a move forward that they will go to councilman, the pledge.
Yes, I will. Lord, we come to focus this afternoon, oh God, let's thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon, we give you honor, we give you praise, oh God. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for what you're doing, we thank you for what you're gonna do, oh God. Lord, you look on us in your counsel, Lord. Bless our mind, Lord, let us come together in one decision of God. Cover us with your blood, oh God. Look at West Memphis as a whole, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. We're moving forward, oh God, and we need your help, Lord. Just bring down us right now, God. Glory to your name, Jesus, we bless your holy name, oh God. We lift you up on this phone line, oh God. We lift you up in the center, oh God. Lord, we lift you up in the council chambers, oh God. Lord, let your spirit flow through that council chamber, God. Cover that place with your blood, wrap it in your love, oh God. Lord, do what you do, bless the council members, oh God. Give us our understanding of your love and your kindness, oh God. Among each other, oh God. Bring us together, God. Glory to your name, Jesus, one decision, oh God, you shine, oh God. And we bless your holy name continuously, oh God. In the name of Jesus, I thank you. Hallelujah. Thank you for what you're doing, oh God. Thank you for what you're gonna do, oh God. Cause you said in your word, "And my people," and we are your people, God. And we are gonna follow your word, oh God. We are gonna let you be God in this city, oh God. And we thank you right now, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
Amen and amen. Let's stand. I will face the screen. Let's recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the nation of the United States, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to officially tell you to order. Ms. City Clerk, would you please call the row?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Clinton.
Please.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin. Counselor Kat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam.
Here.
Counselor Willis.
Here.
Well, Cornby and President, um, we're gonna go to proclamation. I had a proclamation to give, but they were for our entity, so we're not worried about that. We just emailed it to them. Does that correct you to the minutes?
Motion, Captain.
Second.
We got second by Counselor McCrone. All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, we're gonna go down to our old business, Ms. City Attorney?
Make a motion, we table, uh, all our three in reference to, uh, what'd you say, Ms. Mohammed?
Right, and a lot of the coronavirus and everything that's going around, and we had a lot of controversy on our own business, that third reading, writing that special use permit. We had controversy about the parking lot across from that one. So I just want to table it, might indefinitely, but until someone suggested June of 2020, and bring it up again.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, James, well, Ms. Mohammed, uh, second, and Counselor Pulliam.
Ma'am, so I'll table, uh, the next one that's tabled in, uh, till the next meeting.
Okay. Who wants to second it?
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Pulliam, oh one, new bid?
Oh, yeah, we make a motion, read oh one through six, which will be added by the time on there.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? Ms. City Attorney, would you start with oh one?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for 806 Auburn Avenue permitting a greenhouse in a R1 single-family residential district.
Uh, what's y'all wishes?
If I may. If I may, Mayor, property owners requesting that be read out today for the, you know, up or down vote?
Well, I'm gonna have to throw off suspended rules and flex it on the second reading.
No move.
About a second.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? I'm gonna ask you to force the suspended rule and place it on the third reading.
So moved.
Is it a second?
Second.
Say something to third reading. All favor by?
Aye.
opposed?
That's the second reading, right?
No, it's the third reading right now.
The second ordinance granting a special use permit for 806 Auburn Avenue permitting a greenhouse. I'm sorry, that's wrong. Yeah. Yeah. Permitting a greenhouse in a R1 single-family residential district.
Let's be in here for a second reading.
I have a question. How we gonna handle this? Are we gonna approve it for her to put it up there? Even though some of the neighbors don't want it? Or how we gonna handle?
You know, you got a vote in it, so, uh, we gonna...
May, may I please, Mrs. Mohammed? At this time, I don't think it's feasible to approve this because of the coronavirus. We're trying to talk about distancing ourselves, six feet legal separation. If this greenhouse goes up and the vegetables and whatever are free to the public, you may have a cluster of people trying to come in at the same time. So I just really, I think this is bad timing. I know we've been discussing it on and on and on, but I just don't think it's feasible to have this greenhouse right now in light of what's going on in the nation.
Mayor. Mayor.
I agree.
Ms. Holt?
Can I?
You go ahead.
We've had several people out down there that does not want this. So I, I, I would be definitely against you.
Mr. Kat? Tracy?
I think greenhouse would be something nice, but right now, this is just a bad time. I know she's been coming and coming and coming and coming, and has done everything we have asked her to do, but in light of what's going on in the world with the coronavirus and distancing ourselves, I just don't think this is a good time. And I don't know if people would really trust it, not knowing whether or not, you know, someone has coughed or sneezed on the vegetables or something of that nature. So I'm, I'm just not going to vote for it at this particular time.
I'm just gonna call the row, man. When we take a vote, that's okay?
Yes.
All right. Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Counselor Kat?
No.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
No.
Counselor Holt?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Mohammed?
Not at this time, no.
Counselor Monday?
Pass.
Counselor Murray?
No.
Counselor Pulliam?
All opposed.
Counselor Pulliam, can you repeat again?
All pass.
Pass.
Counselor Willis?
No.
Well, that motion fails. It fails. Ms. City Attorney, oh two?
Oh two is an ordinance authorizing the finance department to be allowed to use the signature machine of the city treasurer for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the city treasurer.
Can I, uh, make a motion to force the suspended rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the finance department to be allowed to use the signature machine of the city treasurer for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the city treasurer.
May I force the suspended rules and place it on this, uh, third reading?
So moved.
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
An ordinance authorizing the finance department to be allowed to use the signature machine of the city treasurer for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the city treasurer.
Is that a part of the discussion?
I wanna add something about it, Mayor. There is an emergency clause on here, even though it's not in the title. So, uh, just to make the council aware.
All right, there's an emergency clause in this, it's not in the title. Uh, then we definitely want to place an emergency on it. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? This approved. Also, can I get a motion to second to approve paragraph two of the mercy clause?
So moved.
And it's second. All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? Your ordinance number, please, Ms. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be two five three nine.
Two five three nine. All right. That number, ordinance number two five three nine. Oh three, Ms. City Attorney?
Oh three is an ordinance authorizing Tori Perry as city accountant to open accounts and sign all wire transfers for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Mayor, if I may, ask that we amend that before the second reading to indicate that in the absence of Tori Perry, Dana Voiles has the authority to handle the wire transfers.
So moved.
I can a motion to second to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All favor by? Opposed, the amendment is approved. So can I force the suspended rules and, uh, place this ordinance now in the second reading?
Yes.
So moved.
All favor by? opposed? Ms. City Attorney?
All right, I'm gonna try to read this as amended on the title. An ordinance authorizing Tori Perry as city accountant or Dana Voiles in her absence, in Tori Perry's absence, to open accounts and sign all wire transfers for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I force the suspended rules and place it on this third reading?
So moved.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed?
An ordinance authorizing Tori Perry as city accountant or Dana Voiles in the absence of Tori Perry to open accounts and sign all wire transfers for the city of West Memphis in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Motion to a break, Mike?
Second.
In the discussion?
What section of this?
Huh?
Sixth.
The paragraphs are gonna be two, but I got to see if it's in the discussion, you know, I'll prove this. All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? All right, can I get a motion to second to approve the mercy clause, paragraph two?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by?
Aye.
opposed? Ms. City Clerk, you got a number?
That number will be two five four zero.
It's number two five four zero. Ms. City Attorney, would you read oh four?
Oh four is an ordinance approving Tori Perry as city accountant and a member of the budget committee access to the city of West Memphis safety deposit box in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm gonna ask you to all of us to force the suspended rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
So moved.
All favor by? opposed?
An ordinance approving Tori Perry as city accountant and a member of the budget committee access to the city of West Memphis safety deposit box in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'm asking to force the suspended rules and, uh, place it on this third reading?
So moved.
All favor by? opposed?
An ordinance approving Tori Perry as city accountant and a member of the budget committee access to the city of West Memphis safety deposit box in the absence of the finance director, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion to second to approve?
So moved.
Is that in the discussion? Oh, who's the second? Oh, okay. Ms. Hudson.
Second.
In the form of the discussion? Hear none, all the favor or I? opposed? Can I get a motion to second to approve the, uh, mercy clause, paragraph two?
So moved.
All favor by? opposed? Okay, can you get that ordinance number?
That will be two five four one.
That ordinance number comes up to two five four one. Oh five?
An ordinance approving Tori Perry as city accountant access... I'm sorry. An ordinance to amend the personnel policy to include a social media policy to the employee policy handbook and for other purposes.
It's on for its first reading, we're gonna get with the, uh, personnel committee.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question, Mayor? Okay. We, we're not gonna read that one out because actually, that policy for social media and stuff like that definitely be put in place.
Yeah, we, we got just a few good things that we wanna tweet on there and then get you all to approve.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I need to make a motion to add oh six to the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All favor by? opposed?
An ordinance to grant the mayor extraordinary powers to provide for the safety and health of West Memphis inhabitants and to pass an emergency clause.
Can I force the suspended rules and place it on the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All favor by? opposed?
An ordinance to grant the mayor extraordinary powers to provide for the safety and health of West Memphis inhabitants and to pass an emergency clause.
May I force the suspended rules and place it on the third reading?
So moved.
All favor by? opposed?
An ordinance to grant the mayor extraordinary powers to provide for the safety and health of West Memphis inhabitants and to pass an emergency clause.
All right, that's the third reading. Is that in the discussion?
I had one question, I like, I mean, I noticed when the, uh, city attorney said on it, we can come back later on, but I would like to then say, you know, put a time on it, then if it runs out, then at least we can come back. Cause a lot of times, that's how we get a lot of the ordinance councilors sitting on the book there, you know, never, we never went back to clean up. I was just saying, I mean, as it said, we could just say, October this year.
We had just, uh, we had talked about that earlier in the pre-council, and, uh, this council can come back and revoke it anytime. That was one of my concerns also, Councilman Pulliam, was the fact that it, it didn't have a, a sunset or a limit on it, so, but we can revoke it whenever, uh, without putting a clause in there, from what I understand. The other thing in address, uh, was something that was brought up this week by some citizens, and that is congregations along Missouri Street, which is in, in the ordinance that says that the mayor has the right to invoke the law to make sure that they're staying six feet apart and all this other good stuff. Yeah.
Shouldn't be a whole group?
Yeah. To disband, so it helps us with our laundry, uh, laundry issues, so, I think it's the right thing to do.
Counselor, vote.
I think it's the right thing to do, because yesterday I was noticing that the basketballs are still on the street, boys are still congregating in large groups, playing ball. All of that needs to be stopped.
Sure enough.
I mean, like, immediately.
The police need to get out there and stop it.
I wanna tell you all.
Because people really, a lot of people really don't see the seriousness of this virus because maybe they might be touched by it, but this is true, a killer. Those boys or girls of whomever could be playing ball and take it back in to their baby brother and sister, to their elderly parent or elderly grandparent, and then they would have called someone perhaps to get extreme sick or even worse. But all these things need to be down, even if the basketballs don't, they can be taken down as they did in Memphis, for the health and safety of our city. I'm all for that.
Counselor Pulliam?
I don't mean to harm our young people, but you got to get this being under wraps. That's just the bottom line.
Counselor Pulliam? I did wanna add one thing, uh, how you all do it, we find. I, I would add that if you all would just consider just revoking it when we get past it, due to the fact that on our call, we finding out that it's possible it's gonna be a second strand of the coronavirus just coming this fall once the cooler weather come, come back after the summer. So I hate for it to still be at the same point at that time. So I'm just asking if you all would just revoke it, because the only truth they're talking about to coronavirus, they, uh, COVID virus nineteen, is on talking about that, nothing else.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, 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 I form price to this because this virus...
The problem is not passing, we're not saying not passing. I mean, we can go ahead and vote on it, I mean, I'm, I'm through with it, I mean, I understand, so we can go ahead and pass, I mean, I'm gonna vote for it, so we go ahead and vote.
You didn't have to.
Let me call the vote. Ms. City Clerk, you call the row?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Kat?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Crum?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes.
Counselor Mohammed?
Yes.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Pulliam?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
Yes.
Mayor, your name is vote. Thank you all.
Paragraph four is the emergency.
Uh, can I get one second to approve, uh, paragraph four?
Did we get that number?
Uh, I won't be approved the, uh, mercy clause, then we will.
So moved.
Oh, okay.
All favor by? opposed? Ms. City Clerk, would you give it a number?
That number will be two five four two.
Two five four two.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Two five four two.
Thank you.
Permission request. Uh, that's something that I'm asking you all to consider tableing, because it's something that we definitely need, but right now, not knowing how all the finances are gonna come in the future, it's something we can weigh on, if you all are mine.
So moved.
Second.
All favor by? opposed? All right. Uh, budget meeting? We council, we pretty much council all meets, haven't we? Okay. afar? The far meet?
We did, but I won't be making any reports, we have to pass through this tomorrow.
Okay.
I, 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 but I won't be making any reports for, for last month.
Public work? parks?
No report, please.
Let me, let me ask you all a question. In light of this, in light of this pandemic, do you all think we just need the council, all of our permission meetings, and just speak, come together for some emergency, you all have discussed? And to force it?
So moved. Sorry, I make that up.
But can I just ask one question? Okay, city attorney, I mean, can we do that? About, I mean, I'm just saying, how it's set up? I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, the preference would be if you met to meet like we're doing now virtually and not getting a group of people together. I think you can cancel the meeting if you want to. It just kinda really depends on what kind of business that you might need to attend to that may be necessary. And if it is necessary, then my suggestion would be not to have the meeting person to person and do it like we are today, if we can.
Okay, since we already have it set up, then what we probably could do is just let the public know we won't be having a meeting at this time, and then we do it virtually. We can do it, if we have to do one, do it like we're doing tonight, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, that, that's what I was getting at, okay, that's what I was saying. Okay, cause I know we got them all set up by ordinance. Okay. We'll have to let the public, inform the public that we're not having a meeting, knowing then we have one, we let them know when we have, okay.
No committee reports then. Uh, appointments? I'm asking that you all table the, uh, George Till, and so I can get some type of information and see who's supposed to actually be appointed. This guy, would do we or, or House and the daughter? So, I'm asking you.
We have, I think we got an ordinance somewhere that says, in the ordinance where it is, they send them to us, which we don't have a letter signed, we should have a letter signed out, which we don't, I don't think. But, uh, but at this ordinance somewhere, it just standard, we supposed to, I mean, they're not, they'll send a person to us, we gotta confirm whoever they sent down. We don't have to, but we do the confirmation.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I, if you all wanna do, cause I know I had a meet with, uh, the director, and he, uh, wanted me to sign off on, uh, a new person to the board, but then he told me the next person, uh, would be someone that the city would, uh,
That's, that's why I said we need to find an ordinance, cause we got an ordinance that established it.
What would be y'all wishes? To hold off and take before?
We can hold, we can hold off. We can hold on, I don't have a problem with that. Make a motion to take and see if, you know, if that's him.
Second.
All favor by? opposed? Do you wanna go with anything else? Go ahead.
Mayor, if I made it before, we adjourn or anything? I'd like to go back to oh six.
Okay.
I know you've done a very, very good job of keeping us, of buying us of what's going on, and of course, can't stress the importance and appreciation of that. But, you know, I heard about the person. Uh, and of course, I called, and you told me about that. But is there some way that you can make sure we receive those communications? Even if they're technically not available?
Sure, sure.
If anyone's asked us what's going on, we will be on the front end of that?
Sure, there be no problem, no problem. I was, what?
You're talking about, I haven't heard about a curfew.
Actually, actually, well, this is what I did. I asked the people during my Monday briefing, just to inform them of a, a nullified curfew, and it was nothing that we was enforcing without law enforcement. I was just hoping that the people are just concerned about this, uh, COVID-19 virus as I am. And when you look at all our big, outside of Walmart, all our grocery stores, they are closed at that time. If you're not going to a job in heat where, uh, bars and families are out there, there really no reason for us to be over ten, just hanging out in the world, you know? And car washes and different things like that. So I was hoping that they would get on board, just to wanna keep us safe, to, uh, be at home at nine o'clock.
So why, now it's so late, why nine o'clock? Everybody would have already done, everything may, you know, why they make it a little bit earlier than that? I mean, it's not a curfew where you can't go if you need to. Is that right?
Well...
If it where you have to stay at home after nine, not go no place? After nine, explain it to me.
Well, we, what's, we were being, we, we doing something unprecedented, because no one in our state has stopped this. But if you look right across the bridge, we have a county in Shelby that have more coronavirus cases than our whole state have. And some of the things we were trying to do, just some of, uh, setting the time where people getting out of work at, they say, six o'clock. Some people walking and working out. People going by, picking up the essential things, food or medicine, or going to some food during that time, where at this time, the nine o'clock was a good time for everything to be closed, and after that time, outside of going to a job, you really have no reason to be out. But if you got someone that's saying, well, hey, I'm going out somewhere at eight thirty, where you still got stores open, I don't wanna use our resources and possibly stopping someone if we did. If someone's going to Big Star, how Big Star is open.
Is it a curfew or just to stay at home or unless necessary to go out?
Well, since you all have given me none of the authority, I'm asking for a curfew. Because right now, every day, we pretty much, uh, tune in to the government's, uh, report, as well as we on a Monday, we on a early morning, uh, phone call. And they are projected by April of, uh, twentieth, no, April the, the twenty.
Second, third week, please.
The second, third week, we may have thirty-five hundred cases. And... The second and third week, we may have thirty-five hundred cases and up to so many deaths. So what I'm trying to do is be real proactive, to make sure we address this now instead of later. And I would just go through the curfew to May the first.
Until May first?
Yeah, May first. But I don't need to prove my job. I'm just trying to eat to keep it, you know, because right now, Mr. Mahoney, I ran into a little problem that I'm glad I do have you all here. I know I don't have the jurisdiction to close down churches, but we have some other cities within the county that's allowing funeral, church service to go on, and we got pastors right here that have been, uh, found positive with the coronavirus because they still home and serve. None of that has this power, I'm gonna nicely ask that, uh, the churches find some other way, like Zoom, Facebook Live, or like First Baptist, do it through the radio, do some type of way, because they still are saying that, uh, God gonna protect them. But I mean, it's happening within the church, and we all believe that. As well as I'm meeting with the, uh, funeral homes, uh, Rosa Citizens, Wolf Brothers, Anthony's, giving them all the other cities any type of way that we can do funerals differently, because it's another funeral this weekend. And when people get sick, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that we taking care of them safe. There's five families that we got.
I do think that, because we had pastors, uh, we had pastors across the board from Christians to Jews to Muslims that have died because of congregating. And I was watching on CNN just on yesterday where this choir had choir rehearsal of, of, and forty-five of those choir members were tested positive for the virus, including the choir director and his wife. This is a true story, nothing made up. The choir director himself was talking on CNN. I think four of those choir members, they died since that rehearsal. So it's not about God not taking care of us. I think one of the first things that's developed in a fetus is the brain, and God gave a sense, you know, for us to use. And this is a bad time, but we just have to be proactive and use the sense that God has given us. Yes, we all want to continue on with our life, but we just have to accept the fact that things are just not normal as we once saw normal anymore. And like, we're having this viral meeting, and, and of course, you know, uh, the church is inside of you the hope of glory, and that doesn't mean we can't worship and praise God. You know, we have to pay our bills online, we have to do a lot of things online for the protection of ourselves. And God forbid, anyone of us could come down with it or may even have it now, we don't know. But as far as just trying to protect ourselves and protect our congregation, we shouldn't be hugging each other and kissing on each other. And I heard a report today where even sometimes the spittle, when you're talking to people, projects so far out in the air, if you stay there for a while, and this has been proven that even the spittle, if you're walking in a park or something, you could walk into someone's spittle that's been projected in the air. So it's, this is very, very serious, people. Please note that this is really, really serious, and let's just try to be careful. We're not trying to punish anybody, but consequently, we don't want you to punish anybody by disobeying what the CDC has recommended for us to do.
I wanna give you all the update right now, as of today right now, we have thirty-two cases in Creighton County. Let me be precise, Creighton County, because some people say, well, you got thirty-three, thirty-two cases in West Memphis. No, there's thirty-two cases within Creighton County. West Memphis have our share, and I just said other cities have their share as well. But we got thirty-two cases right now. And, uh, I just wanna remind everyone that, that's calling me about the churches, right up the road in Cleveland County, there's a pastor, his wife came back with the coronavirus and gave forty of their members the coronavirus, and they were just trying to worship. So that, that's, that's what we have. We are the unprecedented time, and I mean, asking people to be at home, asking people to be on the outside, because, you know, it's not punishing anyone like you said. We just wanna make our city safe, and if you see by the charge, you can see the numbers.
Well, I, I think, I think it's the right move. A few people gonna be upset, but in the end, I mean, they gonna be glad that it happened, because the only way this thing is going with is through social isolation. That's why they considering now is a nation, a, a, nationwide, uh, uh, isolation deal, because that's the only way you gonna be able to break the chain, because taking, getting a series of testing, you don't know who have, who got it, and really has to be transmitted, so that's the best thing. And I can say, we got to take our, our, because we say to people here as well as working, working as well, because if we don't, I mean, they got to constantly come in contact with different things then. I mean, I think it's just for everybody, because if they got to come in contact as possible if they could become infected now, you got no problem. So I think it's a good thing, you know, I mean, it's, to me, it's not a debate, we'll really be honest with you.
And while we're talking, someone posed a question to me, if we're gonna close down the churches, what are we gonna do about the liquor stores?
Well, let me, let me answer that. The governor has set a mandate. The governor has set a mandate, and the state law has come up to think like it's essential and unnecessary business. And we don't make that decision, that's, uh, that's another pay grade above us, but it's more their decision, like the bar shop, the bridge salons, uh, tattoo parlors. Even the marijuana species is all essential business. Now, I can't answer that, but that was the state saying, and I guess on state, it's on taxes. It's mental, so...
I just wanted to put that out there, because I don't want you to say that City Councilwoman Mohammed asked for the churches to be closed, but she didn't say anything about the liquor stores. So I'm putting that out there, you know, we don't want, we want people to be drunk on the spirit, but not on the wine, to be honest.
Also, I wanna add one thing. Congressman Kett came in yesterday and, uh, addressed the concern that he had. And, uh, first of all, he do have a heart, so he is a nice guy underneath, but you know, it's an individual that, uh...
Why you say underneath?
Everyone give the guy that had that big, uh, positive coronavirus, trying to walk through a store. They just live like that, and he wants to know exactly what our police departments have to do. And it's not, it's not the charge that you would like to see, uh, Congressman Kett, but we can cite them, and we'd be a misdemeanor on that, as well as, uh, he came over the program, uh, EMS department chief, Chief Clay, and Assistant Chief Rose, I spoke with him this morning. They are going to track the people who have this virus, call them every day, a couple times through the day to make sure they stay within their presence, and hopefully with the good neighbors, since they were partnered with us, so if they need food, we can drop our food to the front door provided, for they have no reason to leave out the house until they're fourteen days old.
And I'd like to say one last thing, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I know we kinda like, you know, putting the budget, budget meeting here is off, you know, for a minute, but in the meantime, in between time, I hope that we can come together somewhere and have, I mean, it's, you know, like, next couple of, two, three weeks, you, you all, time, because I know you got your hands full. That's where on the plan of action, because eventually somewhere along the line, you know, our revenue stuff is gonna start to decline. And so I'm just trying to say, you know, if you come over, quick, I mean, just give yourself two, three weeks, because us meeting now until you all can really see above the cloud, because there's so much going on around, so that's what I like for it to happen, you know, the next three weeks at least, you know.
Councilman, please, uh, I wanna say something, I don't know if I need to say it, Tracy, so cut me off. I got a report yesterday of a big number that came in. Do you wanna talk about that, Tracy, or we just talk some other time?
Well, again, because I, I was assuming that paperwork, and I can go back and address real quick the budget. I got the January numbers yesterday afternoon around three thirty, I worked on my site around eleven. And about halfway through entering all the data, I will finish that by the weekend. We're still working on getting all this data uploaded to the platform, where each of you will have your account, where you can sign into it, instead of constantly printing out these reports. Uh, the mayor had pulled in to first strings on some spending, and the first month on budget, you know, we came in five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to the positive. Uh, so again, department heads have been informed, you know, unless it's an absolute necessity, don't be out and buy it, uh, and they have heated that advice, and then the first month was a good strong number. But you're absolutely correct, we are gonna have some downturns. The check we received from Southland was almost twice as much as normal. Reason for that is in February, the way the law was passed, once they break the hundred and fifty million dollar mark, it alters the amount of funds the city receives from them. Of course, it's an increase, and I believe that check was in excess of nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, we know we may not get another check for three months, which normally runs around a half a million. So, you know, the mayor's trying with his department head still to pull everything in, let's don't be doing anything right now that's absolutely necessary. Uh, but yes, as soon as we can get a, maybe a Zoom conference set up or something, we can get together. I should have the January numbers finished by the weekend, and I'll get with Nick till we put together.
Well, see, that's really, I was saying, give it all a couple, like, three weeks, and that way, you know, you got January, February, then, you know, I'm just saying, us two hours march, and that'll give us a real picture, that's all. And it just give, give you in the middle a little way to work on, because, I mean, there's so much going on in this thing. That's, that's really, I'm saying, at least by three weeks.
Now, I think we have a lot of data compiled for you by then.
Okay.
I also talked to Frank, he getting better, he just came out, I see you, so he got his own room today. Gotta keep him, keep praying for him, Miss Patricia as well, Rex, and all of our city family members. Uh, Councilman, please, will it be fine with you if we just, we pick on the next council meeting? Or you wanna try?
That'll be fine, I mean, I'm good, I mean, you know, I'm good.
Uh, is there anything else? I love y'all guys, y'all be safe.
So moved.